Meeting of the Highland Park Board of Education. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of, I'm missing a page, and to attend the meetings of the public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the Highland Park Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting, setting forth the time, date, and location to be submitted for publication to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger, and posted on the board's website at least forty-eight hours in advance of this meeting. Members of the public who wish to address the board will be given the opportunity to do so before the board adjourns for the evening. And now Vice President Mark Krieger will read some other introductory language that we are required to include.
Hello, everybody. Okay. During this meeting, we ask that all members of the public mute themselves unless they are speaking during a public comment period. If needed, we may mute you ourselves. You may leave your video on or off at your option. If we experience bandwidth issues and believe that limiting video could help, we may do so. We will have at least two public comment periods. If at the time that you wish to speak, please, if at that time you wish to speak, please raise your blue virtual hand in Zoom and wait for us to call on you. If you cannot raise your virtual hand, or if we miss your virtual hand, please turn on your video camera and raise your actual hand. New Jersey law requires us to inform you that all commenters must behave appropriately. In Highland Park, this means no screaming, obscenities, or inappropriate video displays. In the event of a speaker's inappropriate behavior, they will be muted, and we will come back to them at a later time. If the speaker is the final commenter at the last comment period, we will invite them to return at our next meeting. That's it.
Right. That ought to be enough instructional material for our public here. Linda, could we have the roll call, please?
Sure. Ms. Simarusti?
Here.
Ms. Coleman?
Here.
Ms. Gowan?
Here.
Mr. Krieger?
Here.
Mr. Magaziner?
Here.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Here.
Ms. Prus?
Here.
Mr. Roslevich? Mr. Woodward?
Here.
Ms. Gowan, if you could let me know when Mr. Roslevich arrives, in case I don't happen to see him come on, I'd appreciate it.
Will do. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. We now invite everyone to join us for the Pledge of Allegiance, if you are so inclined. Scott and Linda, could you lead us, please? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America,
of America,
and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Justice for all.
Thanks, guys. I see we have two communications noted here. Linda, were there any communications not noted on the agenda?
Not to my knowledge. If anyone received anything they know about for the board. We've been getting some emails directed to the individual board members that I do not see. So if anybody sees that, Dr. Taylor did apprise me of one, just please forward it to me so I can put it on the agenda. Thank you.
Oh, okay. Yeah, we haven't been doing that. I will try to remember to do that.
Appreciate that.
Um, we have before us, this is a workshop meeting here, I should have said. We have minutes from our meeting of November ninth and November sixteenth. Does anybody have questions or comments or corrections? Nope. All right. Most fun part of the evening, our student representative report. Hello, Polly and Mariana. Please proceed.
Hi. Okay. Um, so the high school, past news, the high school had a really nice assembly before Thanksgiving break. We'll put together a video of thanks, which featured students, a bunch of teachers, and the administration saying what they're thankful for. And then the grades competed in a game of Thanksgiving trivia, which I believe the freshmen won. So kudos to them. And then an edited copy of the Thanksgiving assembly was actually sent through email. So I believe they're going to start doing that with our assemblies now on. Um, the HP Monk team participated in the Connect Mon Conference this past weekend. So congrats to them for a great performance. And then the full list of award winners will soon be posted to their website, hpmonk.com. For coming news, from December to January, Highland Park youth can attend a series of Zoom workshops featuring basketball guest speakers. So guest speakers include coaches Dana Peterson, Kiki Bind, Albert J., and Isa Guzman. An email was sent through Genesis with more details. And then also really cool, Highland Park Deca is hosting Decryptit, which is a virtual escape room. And people can sign up still. There are still time slots available for December eighteenth, nineteenth, and twentieth. And all proceeds will benefit the Chaotic Spider Foundation, which is a nonprofit that helps those suffering. And then I think Mariana has middle school.
Thank you, Polly. Mariana?
Hello. Okay, so for middle school, we're always having guests in on Wednesday from the community. You could reach out to Ms. Miller for an invite at jmillar@hpschools.net. Middle school teachers designed an incentive program. The students will be chosen weekly and monthly, and those chosen have the opportunity to choose one prize from a list of incentives. Ms. Hawthorne is doing a turkey in disguise contest. And you have to vote with the heart, the turkey you like the best, by clicking on the icon underneath the image of the turkey, and the winner of each grade is getting a prize. Students are encouraged to participate and interact with the HB Windows of Understanding yearly event coming January eighteenth. Windows of Understanding is a public art project meant to transform Main Street into spaces from which the community can learn about positive strides being made by local organizations. This year's topics include climate change, food insecurity, healing from trauma, public health, and youth engagement. They will both have, they will both virtual and hybrid programming. And then for Bartle, the Student Council has been hosting Find Danny the Dolphin. Students have drawn our mascot and displayed him in their windows. Bartle students are challenged to find as many as they can while walking around town. And then on December seventh through December eleventh, Encouraging Positivity Inspiring Change, or EPIC, is hosting a Disney Spirit Week. And we will have a whole, and then they will have a whole school meeting on December eighteenth, with, and their monthly theme is be somebody who makes everybody feel like somebody. And that's it.
And you're muted.
Of course I am. Sorry about that. Thanks, guys. It's still learning Zoom here, eight months in. Did any board members have questions about the students' report?
No question. I just wanted to say how good I felt to hear all of the, you know, positive activities that the students are engaging in and just helping each other, helping the community sort of get through this timer. And it's really encouraging to hear. So that's sort of the theme that I pulled from a lot of these different activities that you all reported on.
That is wonderful to hear. Yeah. Students, I meant to, we've never really talked about this, but I do want to make sure you know that you're welcome to speak up during board discussions of any sort. We really do welcome your input on, you know, the other matters we discuss. I don't want you to feel like your only role here is to read your reports, which are wonderful, but please do feel free to speak up. Kristin, oh, yeah, you have your.
Polly, I just, the audio went out for a second. What was the foundation that you said that was the benefiting from the fundraiser?
It's called the Chaotic Spider Foundation.
And what do they, what do they, what do they do?
Um, they primarily provide children suffering from PTSD with guide dogs, support dogs. Yeah.
Cool. Thank you.
And they're local. They're right here in Northern Park.
That's really cool. All right.
I want to give a quick shout out, Anne, if you don't mind, to Mariana. She was one of the twenty students who came to the listening session I had Monday.
Oh, great.
She stayed behind. We had a one-to-one, and she gave me some great input. So, Mariana, thank you for repping students.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And maybe we'll hear some of that from you tonight if you feel like sharing. No need, but if you feel like it.
Anne?
Yes.
I just wanted to point out to Linda that Rob got here at seven forty-two.
Ah, thank you, Dorothy. I see you now. Hello, Rob. You get points for that window. You know, that Twitter account that rates people Zoom windows? Yours is looking good. All right. Superintendent's report, please, Scott.
Yeah, thank you. So I'm gonna start with a couple of miscellaneous items, and then I want to share a lot of data with you tonight about grades, marking period one grades at our middle and high schools. So hang on one second while I get my slides ready. So, by the way, board members, the entire slideshow is now uploaded to the board agenda. Look in the superintendent's folder. You'll be able to download a PDF version of what I'm sharing. I'll be providing a lot of numbers, a lot of quantitative work here on grades and analysis that we're doing. So you might want to look at it more closely by downloading the PDF later. First things first, as we all know by now, the district will be working with an organization that's already in place in Saverville and South River School Districts to provide free testing to our district community. I want to clarify a couple of things that, I think the clarification, since we rolled out the flyer over the weekend, I guess, very good questions from parents in particular about the testing process. A couple of things. First of all, everybody will get a test. It is required that we be screened. Takes about two or three minutes. I just did a screening. They called, the organization we're working with calls it a telehealth visit. I just did it earlier before the board meeting. Took about three minutes. I was asked basic questions like, am I taking any medication? If so, what meds? Do I have any medical conditions in my family, the history of heart disease and whatnot? It's a screen similar to that I recall having to do when I went to urgent care. And I got a COVID- nineteen test over there about a month or two ago. So the screen takes a couple of minutes. And I'm going to be the first person apparently tested on Thursday. I'm the tester. And the turnaround time is a couple of days. So everybody will get a test. The screen isn't really intended to weed people out. If you're asymptomatic, if you're concerned that you're out and about and maybe carrying the virus, you can get a test, and it's free. The other thing I want to point out is that the Irving and Bartle School community will be hosting a new seeing eye puppy. This is the new seeing eye pup that the tailors are raising called Afreye. Afreye is a name assigned by the Seeing Eye Organization. It's Ghanaese in origin, and it means, I'm sure there's an intention here, born during good times. Afreye is going to be read to by our Irving students, both virtual students as well as in-person students on Tuesdays. And then she'll join the Bartle crew on Thursdays. I did this with the first seeing eye puppy that my family raised, and that puppy flew through graduation with flying colors, and I wouldn't put past the kind of social interaction she had with our children here at the school district being a part of what made her so successful. I'll be talking about Afreye, the seeing eye puppy, and other ways that Elizabeth Asamoah and I are helping prop up our kids' challenging mental health conditions right now, next week. So Elizabeth Asamoah, the director at the teen center, and I will co-present on two things. First, we're going to share the data from a survey that she implemented, she and her team implemented, at middle and high school students about their mental health. And then we're going to talk about what we have in place to help our students. But tonight, I want to focus on academic growth. And I am going to share quite a bit of data. Much of it's going to be disconcerting, as it is to me, it will be to you. I'll start by showing you the data that I'm going to share with everyone what I've so far taken away from the data, and then update the board and the community on the action steps we've already taken to address our concerns about about rates of failure, of students failing classes. So first of all, I haven't updated the board and the community on our attendance data lately. This is for the week of November sixteenth, which was the last full week we had of school. Why don't you take a look there? I'll sit on this slide for a couple. This is our attendance data at the middle and high schools. There's some trends. Some trends, some obvious trends that in the case of our special ed students that are English-language learners could be correlated to the higher rates of classes that were failed among those particular subgroups. And we'll talk about that in a minute. So let's take a look at the analysis of grades we did, particularly looking at students who failed at least one course by subgroup. What you're looking at are the numbers of students who failed at least one course in the middle school by subgroup, comparing last year's marking period one grades and this year's marking period one grade. So why don't you sit on that for a couple of minutes, for a couple of seconds? We're going to move on to now showing you the data broken down by special ed English-language learner group and ED, which stands for economically disadvantaged students. So again, to clarify, if you're looking at the economically disadvantaged group, what I'm sharing with you is that in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, twenty students failed at least one marking period class. This past marking period, which just ended a couple of weeks ago, sixty-eight of those same subgroup students failed at least one class, marking period one. Now I'm going to move on to the high school. And the next slide again breaks down the data by these three subgroups: English-language learners, special education students, and economically disadvantaged students. So economically disadvantaged students are those students whose families qualify or guardians qualify for free or reduced meals. So now I want to share with you what some of my takeaways are. I mean, I think some, I think most of the takeaways are unfortunately obvious. But before I get to that, I do want to point out that this is a problem that districts around the country are seeing. What I am finding helpful is looking at models that some particularly larger school districts are employing to address this problem. And you see here, one district in Oregon, one high school, had more than half of its kids fail at least one class. It's unacceptable. And it's going to be incumbent upon us as a community to wrap our arms around those kids who have been detrimentally impacted by the pandemic, who are, as I'm going to share with you in the next slide, generally are Hispanic students, are English-language learners, and are special education students. So like Montgomery County in Maryland, so are we here in Highland Park, seeing a big hit being taken by some kids in these particular subgroups. So my takeaways in both the middle and the high school, I believe, are Hispanic English-language learners, special education students, according to the data, have been most detrimentally impacted by the pandemic, as it does reflected by the rate of failing one class, at least one class. I did correlate the data I just showed you on white students, the special education students. So in other words, many of our special education students who failed at least one class also fall into the category, the racial category, white. I also found a correlation between the data on low-income students across the board and our impacted students. So many of our special ed students, many of our Hispanic students, and many of our English-language learners are also our low-income students. This is having looked at the, cross-checked the names of the students who fell into certain categories across the demographic spectrum that I looked at. So what we've got to do now is use the data to help our students. We've got to use the data as information, helpful information, to figure out what's going wrong. It's obviously very, very disconcerting. I would say almost crisis-level disconcerting. But rather than just lament the data, we have to leverage it. We have to use it, take advantage of it to do several things. We have to, first of all, figure out what our case challenges are. And I'm going to talk a little bit about how I believe we can do that. Obviously, then do whatever it takes to build in additional supports. And what I believe will be an outcome sooner than later, a way for us to look at how, what we're, the way we're teaching, at least to kids in these subgroups, is not effective. The questions that I've asked myself after looking at the data, I'm thinking, well, you know, is this a matter of kids not doing their work? Are there students who fallen off the cliff because they're just not engaged in online interaction? For instance, are teachers, for the most part, built in lots of flexibilities, things like, you know, you don't have to use your video cam if you're not comfortable doing so. We'll give you a little extra time to submit assignments. You can do long-range projects instead of quick turnaround assignments. Not only would I ask if our flexibility hasn't been enough to intervene here, but have, I wonder as well, and I should have asked, this is a sub-question. Are we, are flexibility options not appropriate? Or are we just not using the right flexible strategies to support our kids? And frankly, we have to wonder if we provided enough support. Maybe there's much more we have to do. And it might mean we have to put some of our funds towards, you know, hiring additional staff, if we can find it, opening up different resources that we can pull from outside our school district if necessary, if necessary. And as I pointed out earlier, I think the way we're teaching might be part of the issue, at least as it applies to the students who we're targeting and wrapping our arms around as having failed these classes, marking period one. And of course, you know, there might be conditions at the home that we either are not aware of yet, or we are aware of, haven't appropriately addressed to help the kids who were challenged overcome those challenges that they've inherited, that are no doing of their own, obviously. And finally, I've got to ask again of my team, do we have kids who are having technical problems, and that's getting in the way of learning? So how are we going to do this? How are we going to answer some of these questions? Well, first, we need to, here at the district level, look at the data carefully in small groups first. My curriculum team, that includes the Director of Special Services, Susie Budine. We have to call the homes of all the students, particularly in the subgroups who failed these classes. We have to find out exactly why, what's going on, what are the challenges? I have to engage my leadership team as a whole. And not necessarily in this chronology, there could be some things happening at the same time. For instance, I foresee that while I'm working with my curriculum team and my leadership team, I'm going to want to hold meetings with the experts in the field, working directly with these kids, like the ESL teachers, like Susie, or special ed director. And then ultimately, by very early next calendar year, January, February, before we start getting too far into the end of the first semester, we need to be sure that we've addressed all the problems that we've identified. Already, I have been working with my curriculum team. We started doing a deep dive of the data last week. Phone calls are being made to impacted students, and a number of the students who've fallen the demographic data sets that I shared with you a few slides ago have already, after we did reach out to their families or guardians personally, have already taken the opportunity to come in person. That's going to start Wednesday in person at the high school. So they have access to our, what's likely, superior Wi-Fi infrastructure. There will also be a teacher's assistant present. And they can be there for the entire four-hour period. We're going to give them a safe, quiet, distraction-free environment in which to work. So I want to start closing out by just pointing out to the rest of the board, outside of some of our board committees that looked at the data. And as well, the community who's here will be watching the recording of this video, that our board, particularly at the committee level, is very concerned about the, what is really, I mean, two, two and a half times the number of failing students who failed grades this year, first marking grade than last year. It's my intention to work closely with the board in the next several months to liaison with them and share what the administration has been doing. I do believe that the board and I can work hand in hand to try to address this problem. When I work with the leadership team, obviously, I'm going to have to appoint certain people to take the lead on the efforts to deep dive into the data and identify the supports we need to put in place. What I'm going to do personally is continue to work with some of my colleagues around the state, particularly those in the four districts that I'm listing here on the slide, to see what they're up to. Right now, all of the districts, all of the district superintendents with whom I've spoken, either personally or by email, have indicated that they have assigned F grades to students. However, the difference is, depending on the district, how they are now following up with the data and using the data to provide supports for their kids. And I've already learned a couple of things that I found helpful that I'll then turkey to the leadership team. So that's what I have to share for now. Again, to the board, I suggest you download the file that I placed in the board folder. If you want to see the data up close, next week I'll talk about our progress towards helping our students who are having mental health challenges. So I want to turn it back over to Anne and Mark.
Thanks so much, Scott.
So much, Scott.
Um, I have an echo. Are you guys hearing my echo?
Yeah.
Oh, wonderful. Fortunately, Mark was going to say a few words about a discussion that he and Scott and I had this morning about a possible way forward. And for my part, I want to really applaud Scott for the initiative the district is taking to look into what happened with these students. That's obviously the main thing, right, is to figure out what's going on, what problems students are having, et cetera. But in the short term, there is certainly a concern with whether the district can defensively give students F grades during a pandemic. So Mark is going to speak about that for a moment before we start the full board discussion. Mark?
Anne, thank you. And Scott, thank you as well. So just for some background, Scott met with the Curriculum Committee and with the Equity and Excellence Committee and got a lot of feedback about this. And this morning, he and Anne and I spoke about the the situation with the failures, the large number of students, between two and a half and three times as many students of failing courses as we would have in a non-pandemic year, a typical year like last year, which to a certain extent means that the district is failing. We're not doing what we should be. And from my perspective, is not acceptable. So Anne and I spoke slightly after the meeting with Scott. And then following that, I put some ideas down and shared them with Anne, and then shared them with Scott. And I'd like to use this as a framework for our discussion, for the board discussion about this. So I see two parts to solving this problem, to doing something, and doing something in a more of a crisis mode than a studying mode. The first part is board goals. What are our goals? What do we want to change? What do we want to have happen? And the second part is, what actions does the board want the administration to take? And I came up with three goals and three actions. And that's what I shared with Anne, and that's what I shared later with Scott. So, and again, looking at this as, this isn't a problem of grades of F. This is a problem of kids getting lost in the system. Because it's so much more drastic and dramatic than it's been in the past. And of course, there are reasons. There's technical reasons. There's reasons. And of course, there are reasons, there's technical reasons, there's reasons where families. Have illness or death. But the reasons not withstanding, I think, and Anne thinks the district can do more. And again, that's the framework I want to put forward. So the first board goal would be to not give students F grades, but to give students incompletes. And then coupled with those incompletes, have an announced date. Or number of days. In which to work with those students very strenuously, for the district to work very strenuously with those students. To turn those Fs into passing grades. And initially, I thought of 60 days, but when you take holidays into account, we're talking about the end of February. So by the end of February, with working really hard, which I'll get to with the students. We turn those Fs into something else, hopefully, the vast majority of those students. And I mean that on an individual case, those students get individual help. And then the third part, unfortunately, is to accept that some student, that not all students are going to pass all courses. And especially in the pandemic. It may be that, and it will be, I guess, in February, at the end of February, some of those students aren't going to pass. They're just not going to be up to passing. They'll have to get the grade that they deserve. But the hoping we give them enough time and energy that in the next semester, they can turn that they failure into a passing grade. So that's a goal I'd like to propose for the board and for the district. But I'd also like to propose some actions that the administration could take. And I phrased this to Anne early today as an all hands on deck situation. It's not. A major crisis, it's a but it's a crisis, it's a serious problem. And. The first thing I would like to suggest for the administration to do, and I've shared this with Scott about an hour ago. The first thing I'd like the administration to do is to appoint an administrator. A senior person to be responsible for this program. Of working individually with students. To get them over the problems they're having so that they can pass these courses. The second set of goals, and again, this goes with all hands on deck, that it be the major priority for administrators, guidance counselors. Teaching staff. Everyone in the district. To to work on this. That is, that puts other things less important aside. And make this your top priority. We have to solve this problem. And it's not only in the middle school and the high school, you know, it's in all of the schools. I'll get to that in a moment. And then the last part, which really more gets more down into the weeds. Is we do have teachers who in the afternoon are assigned to other programs, professional development. Perhaps having meetings with students on an appointment basis. We have the Wednesday hours. I'm going to propose that those hours be devoted to helping these students. Get. Up to date on their classes and get to a point where they can pass their classes. And then the last thing is, we have to start at the middle and high school. But we can't have students who's. Are close enough to. Leaving the system. To be failing and in effect lose a year. So I think we have to start there, but this is the same for all of the for all of the for all of the students. There clearly must be students in the other grades with the same problems. So those are the goals. I had three goals and three actions. I'm trying to think of this as a serious problem. And and move on with it. So I just would open this to the rest of the board to discuss, and I'm going to write something up tonight. This is all had off the press, just a basic few points. So, thank you. And Anne, I'll turn it back to you.
Thanks, Mark. Before I chime in, I agree with almost everything you said, some of the details, you know, we can work out. What how are other board members feeling about this or any part of Scott's presentation? Magaziner?
Yeah, I it's. It it's very worrisome. I think it's critical that, as Mark said, that we respond and respond quickly. You know, and Scott, when and thank you for reviewing this fully and completely. And. I think I think it has our attention, and I certainly hope that it has the attention of. All of our teachers and staff and throughout the district and leadership. I was looking at the attendance figures first when you were going through this, and I'm seeing. The attendance numbers, which really, I think. We were looking at these. In the springtime. But more so this fall as an indicator that. Well, things kind of were going along. Let's say, well enough in this in the sense of at least kids are showing up for these classes, they're showing up. For online classes at a very, very high level, we were not seeing. Disengagement in the sense of kids not being in the classroom, or at least being on the Zoom calls. So if we're looking at the middle and the high school and seeing 95% or 96% or even 89 or 90%. In the middle and high school in terms of attendance. You know, that was that suggested to us that that things were. It's not okay, at least they were, you know, we knew that the kids were were engaged in at some level. But I guess the question is, is if they are showing up and they're involved in the classes and they're. Attending the classes. What? How is it that that how did this become a surprise now? That they're not also doing some of enough of the work to have a passing grade now? I I would get to the I'd like to get to the passing grade later. Passing. Like, I guess the question is, are we using the same guidelines to grade kids now? In terms of. Grades during this pandemic as as we normally would? Because I I I don't know how I don't know how we could. Doesn't it doesn't make any sense to me that we would be doing using that. Using the same guidelines. I understand that kids need to do the work, need to get to certain benchmarks and complete their assignments. And understand them and pass their tests. But at the same time, I think that a certain amount of leeway. A lot of leeway needs to be given. You know, as we. As we go forward. So I I fully support changing every failing grade to an incomplete. And I, you know, I think that's a great start. And I think one on one work with every student that is willing to. Accept it and go for it. That that's a that's a great head, you know, that's a great start and that we should be moving forward and trying to get everybody back on board. So not a controversial comment, I don't think, but you know, just as a way to get started with the conversation, I think I think this is. Obviously, it's not just here. We know about that. This is nationwide issue. And so I'll let it let somebody else have a chance to talk.
Bob, I think that's a really interesting point about our students being present, but still failing. So obviously, we figure out what the disconnect is there. And then maybe the the students that aren't present are the ones failing. We don't know. So that needs to be figured out.
If 95% of the kids are in class or 92% of, you know, the numbers are very, very high.
Yes.
In terms of those who are failing. So if 95% are there, it's not just the 5%. Who aren't there who are failing there, there clearly are kids who are are showing up and who are at least there for attendance. Who are not. Not fully engaged.
Right, got it. Chris, you have your hand up. Thanks, Rob.
I think Michelle was first, wasn't she?
Oh, I'm sorry, Michelle. I didn't actually see your blue hand against your back.
She was first.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Excuse me, Michelle. No, I just.
So, first of all, I I I like the idea that we're having this conversation in the way that we're having it. I feel really hopeful that we can figure out how to respond. Because it is, it is the situation that is not the student's fault. And I feel like that is very clear so far in the comments that I've heard that this is. We cannot hold the students accountable for not doing the work. Because it's not the same work as it was. It's it's different. And so I like that we're acknowledging that. I feel like, you know, giving kids an incomplete is a very common sense approach to the problem. In a practical way, and I I would fully support that. I feel like this is definitely the beginning of a greater discussion in terms of, you know. The idea of grading or the idea of education, those two things not being synonymous at times. But I do think that in this particular conversation, we should probably focus on. The actions and the goals that, you know, Mark laid out, those types of tangible things. So. You know, I definitely agree 100% with what Rob Magaziner just said, that, you know, there there should not be. The same parameter, metric, rubric, et cetera, to grade the children in this vastly different environment. I think that's unfair. You know, I I I'm a big metaphor person, so I feel like it's best explained in a metaphor. You know, you could not possibly grade a restaurant. On their quality of service at this time. Because the service is now a completely different thing. So all of those, you know, ambiance reviews that you read about a restaurant are pretty ridiculous at this point. And should not factor into the restaurant's rating. So that's a silly kind of metaphor, but I do think that. I've said it many times, you know, this is a time for us to reimagine. Lots of different things. And in my view, it's an opportunity for us to think about things differently. You know, what is the purpose of a grade? What do we want to understand about our students? That's an important thing to consider. Also, I think it's really important to talk to the students directly. Not just the parents, but the students. And say, you know, to them, we are listening to you. And we would like to hear from you. And I don't know if it's appropriate as board to ask that question of the students. But I would love to hear what they have to say about what this situation has been doing to them. You know, especially from a mental health standpoint, I I I love the idea that Ms. Osmoa is going to be a part of this conversation because. Now, I can imagine that. The kids are worried about things that they never thought about before. And they're still expected to put out a certain amount of work and keep up with. All sorts of things. You know, I have a senior, a high school senior in the house. Lots of different conversations are happening. That never would have happened if it wasn't for this pandemic. So senior year is a completely different experience, and I feel badly about that. So I really feel like it's important for us to talk to the students about what their experience is and how. And that's about it for me.
And now I can't talk. I think we got most of that. There was a little bit of audio. Frabble at the very end. Thank you. I think those are all really good points. Thanks, Chris, I think, and then Darcy.
Yeah, I was going to make the point that. When 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 Dr. Taylor talks to the students, they may not really realize the things that might help them. And it might it might be good to talk to the other districts first about what has worked. I mean. You know, I've been teaching remotely, you know, this semester as well. And. For some of these students, I just have no idea how they work in these sort of home environments. It's just so, you know, chaotic. And. I mean, at a certain point, we were really not supposed to ask them to keep their video on anymore, because so many of them were embarrassed about the. The home environment in which they were trying to work. But just let me give give a couple of examples. So, you know, as far a big problem for a lot of these. Students is just the audio connection. If there's a lot of home noise, they just may not be able to participate. And they may not realize that that sort of a decent headset might really help them. You know, because it might block out the noise and and let them really focus on the class. You know, some similar for for those kids that haven't been able to attend. Because they've they've then ended up being the ones that had to provide the childcare for their younger siblings. You know, I know notice other districts have been doing things like, you know, maybe providing some remote daycare for 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 those younger siblings. So the older siblings can maybe participate a little bit more. And they may they may not realize that those are possible options. So. I think it might be a good idea to talk to the other districts first and then do the students survey, discuss some of the possibilities with them.
Right, right. So they know what they're asking about. I I I want to just pick up on the one thing about the audio. I would imagine that audio concerns make it particularly difficult for some of our ELL students, Scott. People who are, you know, trying to understand and they have a crappy audio connection. In my house, it's often not that great, even with pretty good internet and a, you know, so so headset. So I imagine that is prejudicial for some of our students. I'm told that it was Marilyn, then Darcy, says my more observant vice president. Sorry, Darcy. Go ahead, Marilyn.
It's fine. Just a couple of thoughts. First of all, I think it's great that we're having that this transparency that we're honestly acknowledging the problem and talking about it, you know, in public. I think that's really important. And it is everywhere, you know, we see it on the CBS News tonight. They called it the pandemic slide, and they had a whole piece about. You know, grades falling and then losing students. My concern about incomplete, I don't have another alternative, but my concern about incomplete is what you're doing to students is you're then piling on. Work from first marking period that has been completed. Granted, you can make it less. But they still have to do their second marking period, and they were already struggling. So sometimes incompletes. Are not the answer. I'm not sure what is, but I'm just saying that the incomplete could be a concern because you're asking students to do, in a sense, double work or even one and a half times the work. Right? So yeah, but I think. The teachers would know, I feel like in Scott and your plan, I feel like I I think getting the teachers in were at the top. They know why these students are not doing well. They know what interventions they've already tried, you know, have they called home, have they been emailing, have they, you know, whatever they've been doing. It's like every teacher knows each of the students and why. They're in trouble, you know, what what's not working for them. So I feel like that could short circuit some of it, just a. A quick information from teachers. And they might then, well, they'll have to then come back with what kind of assignments need to get done in order to. At the students to a point for where they are demonstrating the content knowledge. It's not so much the assignments, it's they have to show what they're that they've learned something so far. And if not, somebody's got to teach it to them. So it's, you know, it's kind of a, you know, it's got a few different problems there. But I feel like, you know, if everybody's working one on one with these students, it can happen early enough in the semester that we. You know, in the school year that it can really make a difference, the fact that you're looking at it now and actually. You know, going to deal with it directly head on.
That's true. The teachers will provide some of the most valuable information, I would assume. What was I going to say? I assume that if students didn't want to have sort of extra work, they could take the F if they wanted to. But I would encourage our students, if this opportunity becomes available, not to take the F and to do their very best to work with their teachers. Even though it will be difficult, you know, it really will be. Darcy?
Yeah, so just for the record, I was going to point out that Marilyn should be first. Because I saw her hand at the very beginning. So I want to touch on a couple of things that I think haven't been touched on yet. First, I just want to acknowledge how unbelievably stressful this time is for just everyone, the teachers, the administrators, the students. Everyone, you know, and everyone is absolutely trying to do the best they can. That said, as a parent of two new high school students. I do want to point out that while Scott, what might be. You know, your intention from the central office level versus what's trickling down to the teacher level. There may be a big gap there. And, you know, as a parent with two kids in the same grade with, you know, wide variety of teachers, I've seen everything from. Teachers giving kids all the time they need to complete assignments to teachers sticking to. This is due this day. If you handed it a day late, this is the most you're going to get. If you handed in two days late, this is the most you're going to get. And. I think there's a lot of different data points you need to look at, Scott. It's not just kids who got one F. You need to look at the extreme of kids who failed multiple classes. And you need to look at the less extreme of kids who were AB students last year and now are DC students. So there's there's, you know, there's going to be a range here of ways that kids are showing that they're struggling. For some kids, it's got kids, it's going to be, I can't pass a single class. For some kids, it's going to be, oops, I slipped slipped in this one class because I got behind and I couldn't catch up. And for others, it's going to be, I'm behind in everything and I'm not achieving the way I normally would. And. I'm still drowning just as much as that kid who failed one class, but I didn't fail any. And I'm still drowning just as much as that kid who failed one class, but I didn't fail anything. So you're gonna be missing a whole nother basket of kids who are really struggling if all you focus on is failure. So with that said, I think if the district really is committed to working, oh, so there's one other thing that I want to point out. When we started the school year, the intention was, right, the Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, Wednesday catch-up day was how I heard what we were going to be doing. Slowly, that Wednesday catch-up day was sucked out. Right? So there, to my knowledge, there is no time that teachers have in their schedule that is committed to working with those kids that they can see falling behind. So to my mind, by the time the kid's already got the F, I totally hear Marilyn's point, you're almost too late. Because now you are just adding to that kid's burden. You need to catch that kid far before that F grade comes in as a semester grade. You need to catch that kid two weeks into the quarter because I can tell you, that's what happened to one of my kids. Is they got behind, they started getting messages from certain teachers that even if you turn it in now, it's gonna be worthless. So they just went why would I bother? Why would I bother? And then once they're behind, they're behind. Then it's, you just throw up your hands and you give up. And I couldn't blame them. And I wasn't gonna stress my kid out to the point where I was gonna sit them down and make them do work that their teacher wasn't gonna grade anyway. So if we're serious about really being concerned about kids' mental well-being and them learning the content to whatever degree we can, every single teacher needs to be on the same page, every single one. With what the expectations are, when kids, how much time kids have to turn in work. And even Scott, down to the camera thing, just the other day, one of my girls got pulled aside because she wasn't feeling well. So she turned off her camera and literally got told if she didn't turn, she got pulled aside separately and told, if you don't turn on your camera, you're not getting credit for the day.
That's routine.
So this idea that, you know, all the teachers are kind of on board with this more kind of flu, it, it's just not true. It, it's just that is not trickling all the way down. And the kids are feeling that, right? The kids, you know, for my, one of my kids who's there every day and trying her best and, you know, whatever, to all of a sudden be like, if you have one bad day where you don't feel like you can turn on your camera because you don't feel well and you're told you're gonna lose credit if you do that, it's kind of de-motivating. So everybody needs to be on the same page, all of the administrators, all of the teachers. And we need to be working with these kids in the most forgiving of possible ways and not waiting until they failed because then you've already lost them.
Agreed. Thank you. Who was next, Monique, I think? Monique, did you still want to speak? I, I see your blue hand is no longer.
Here, I'm still here, I'm sorry.
Okay, no, no, sorry.
Yeah, I mean, Darcy and many of you have already raised points that I wanted to raise. So, but I do want to just piggyback off of Darcy's comments mainly to say that when Scott presented or started to present his, this presentation during Equity and Excellence Committee meeting, my first response, I just actually couldn't believe that we were actually considering that it's okay to give students an F. And I'm gonna focus on failing, you know, allowing failure during a time of this, you know, national pandemic crisis. And how, how could we even, you know, get to that point with, you know, any student, much less the numbers that we have. And again, I know this is not just an issue for Highland Park. So I just still am stuck there because it's about, it really is about compassion. And I'm not saying that our teachers and our administrators and our staff are not, are dispassionate, of course. But having a super extra dosage of dose of compassion of leading, thinking more so about preserving our students' well-being at this time really has to be the priority. Like, I, I just believe that F should not even be on the table right now, not even to the point where it can be a possibility that we have to, that we would even get to the point where the student could, would get an incomplete because they're going to get an F if they don't. That, we shouldn't even have that conversation. So I guess this does speak to what can, what could have been done sooner. To Darcy's point again, to support students who may not be accessing the curriculum content and learning of the content to the extent that that is expected at this time. But I think another point that I want to make is just, again, from an equity standpoint, we know the equity gaps, but in a way, yes, we do have to focus on where the gaps are, but this gap conversation, what it does is it takes our mind off of the fact that it's not the students. It's not the students that are the problem. It is the system, it's the way that, you know, as well-intended as we all are, obviously, as all our educators are, we cannot keep applying the same approach with little tweaks to teaching and learning to pandemic remote learning that we've never done before. And we're only, still only a few months into, and I'm speaking as a teacher here, that literally still we're trying to figure it out. The best of us are still trying to figure out, figure it out. So as a teacher, I speak to teachers literally every week and consult with them who are having nervous breakdowns multiple times a week, just getting through the week. And I feel that same way too. So I can only imagine how students are feeling going through this too. And we're absorbing this whole national conversation about this dark, this, this very dark winter we have ahead of us. So I don't mean to preach, but I'm just saying, like, let's just stop there and, and focus on that being our, 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 our launch pad, right? I don't care about, to be honest with you, how much we cover. How, you know, how much content and curriculum we cover this year. It's done. We're in a pandemic. What are our children doing to get through this time is my question. If we're so focused on grades and, you know, whether you're passing with your failing, we're not tapping into, well, what are they doing to get through at this time? Where, why are we, why aren't we giving them credit for that? I have a child who learned knitting during this time. You better believe I'm gonna figure out a way to give that child credit for learning how to knit in my class, whether it's writing about it, whether it's doing a, you know, math, a calculation about how they did a video. They're gonna get credit and that's gonna go towards their grade. Um, so why can't we think outside of the box like that? Because we're in a time that is completely outside of the box. So I'm just so, I'm sorry, I meant to not get wound up because, Scott, I have to apologize to you in public. When you gave your presentation in the Equity Excellence Committee, I, meaning I stopped you when I saw failing grades and numbers. And I was just like, whoa. I was taken aback. And so I cut you off because I just couldn't believe it. And it's because I'm so absorbed in this whole thing myself, as a mother, as a parent, as a teacher. And I work with disabled students who some of them can't even access the environment and when they want to. So I, I guess, I guess what I'm saying is, can we just, first of all, say, no one fails. No one even is, we can't even think about that as an option. We keep our expectations high. We wanna keep our expectations high, but we also have to have compassion and be, give as much leeway as any kid and every kid needs at this time, per, period. And this whole thing of looking at the differences with the different marginalized populations in the general, we know that's gonna be there. I don't even want to like, I'm, that whole conversation focused on the equity gaps, yes, is important. Yes, there's certain kids. But the point is, look at our system and what do we need to be doing differently and better? And how do we, how can we tap into the assets that these students actually have and their families actually have? I don't want to hear anymore about, well, who can't, who has so much noise in their background, who has so many distractions, you know what? Let's find out what's working. Let's find out what is actually working in these students that we can't tap into with this, with the narrow measurement that we are so used to applying. And that's, you know, that's where I want to hear more thinking about that, both at an administrative level and down to our teachers, hear from the students themselves. How, what are they doing? How can we pull in what they're doing into our system of acknowledging their learning and go from there?
Thanks, Monique. It reminds me a lot of Michelle's talk about strength-based evaluations or you know, focusing on strengths, not deficits, in addition to numerous other things you said.
If we should do that now, when can we?
Right, right, exactly.
Now in a pandemic, when can we?
I will say to Darcy's point about all the kids being stressed out, I cannot imagine. I have one kid who's, you know, eh, fine, you know, being home. Another kid is really kind of devastated and depends on his social life. And I can't imagine if that kid got an F, what that would say. Like, you showed up in class, you did all these things you didn't want to do. It was really boring sometimes because it was on a screen. You're not with your friends, you're not engaged in rich discussions for the most part because it's difficult to resume. And I got an F? That would be the end of my kids' motivation. Mark, did you have your hand up earlier?
I, I did. I had it up before. But for a different reason than I did want to say something now.
Okay.
Which is, after hearing about some of the inequitable wake that some of the classes are run, in other words, the classes aren't run the same way. And that attendance is taken, except if you shut off your camera, you're not okay, you don't get credit and, and all the other rest of it. And what Monique just said, I, I think I would, I would change my view about incompletes and trying to turn, and Marilyn said as well, about you know, piling it on even further. I still think we should get to the root of the problem for each of the students as a, as a, at a crisis level, find out what is going on and try to help the individual students as, as much as humanly possible. But I think as far as the grading, I would be completely positive about the Fs just going out the window, the incompletes going out the window and doing something to have some minimum grade that every student gets who's been in class for the, the semester. Because it is an unusual, to say the least, the unusual time and which we've ever seen before.
I don't agree. What Monique said was very powerful.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
One very quick thing. Other than kids who are in ninth through 12th grade, who are applying for colleges or will be applying for colleges and whose grades in those years may count toward colleges. Why, what, what is the point of the grade at all? So.
Yeah, no. Michelle, I think you had your hand up and then Marilyn. I think that was the order, but
I'm actually gonna stop my video, hoping that my audio is improved that way. First of all, I wanted to say amen to Monique and Rob both. And I mean, I, I really, I love that we're having this discussion and this is one of those bright spots of the pandemic. We would not be having this discussion necessarily if we were not going through this tough time. The idea of grading is a big discussion. We do need to have, you know, a big discussion about that. But I do feel like as for as long as I've had children in public schools, we've been talking about standardization of, you know, grade. And making sure everyone is on the same level and uniformity of behavior. And so many things that bothered me as a person who studied education and psychology and other things regarding children's development. This is now an opportunity for us to have that conversation. And as Monique said, to really focus on strengths, not deficits. So I am willing to go to the mat with any teacher or administrator that would like to disagree that that's the direction we should go in. I am, I am not, you know, threatening violence or anything. It sounds like, you know, a wrestling match is about to ensue, but enough is enough. The kids are stressed. We are stressed. The whole country is going in a direction that worries, you know, so many of us. It's time for us to have the conversation about what the goals are that we have set for our children and what they should be. Because again, having the same standards during this crisis is kind of crazy. I mean, I understand keeping things uniform for kids, you know, is important, routines, et cetera, are important. We don't want to run around in circles being, you know, dramatic. But I really honestly feel nothing but frustration when I think about teachers who are still demanding what we used to ask of students pre-pandemic. That is just beyond troubling. I mean, that should go on their permanent record if that's the case. If it's, if it's that serious that they're, you know, refusing to understand what they need to do to be flexible, I would not like to continue employing them.
I do want to, sorry. I do want to say that I think there's probably a fair amount of misunderstanding among teachers about sort of what the goals are and what the atmosphere is that we're trying to establish. And, you know, I, I would imagine there are teachers who sincerely feel, Michelle, that, you know, this is what they have to do to excel as a teacher. So I, I think the issues we're seeing are multifaceted, right?
And I, I completely understand that. But, you know, just because the state of New Jersey requires that we do X, Y, and Z, there does come a time when you need to not follow orders and you need to think for yourself and do what's best for others. And I think that's where we are when it comes to grading and attendance and other things. What is the purpose of it? I think that is a really important question.
Yeah, Rob asked a good one there. That's for sure. I think it was Marilyn and then Chris. Did you still want to speak, Marilyn? Your hand went down.
Yeah, I put my hand down. Yeah. I'll flip on the, what I said before, in that I do think grades do matter as a symbol or as a metric for our students' learning, right? So the goal of middle, especially middle school, high school, but all the way through is that certain content, it's expected that our, our district will teach certain content and students will leave us knowing certain content. Colleges depend on that, right? If you transfer from high school to high school, they rely that our kids have, you know, if they see a grade on a report card or a grade on a transcript, it has meaning, right? So that's just something that kind of falls into the mix, right? Our students have to demonstrate on sometime in the future ACTs, SATs, whatever, college placement, that they've learned this stuff. So really, that's what's gotta be the focus. How we grade is just a symbol for whether the student, ideally, whether the students learn the information or not, or learn the content. Again, particularly at the high school level. But just something else. I'm not one who says just, why are we grading? There is a reason why we're grading. You know, it may not be working for us right now, or for those particular students. It's working for many students, I think. And the last thing I want to say is that I know, you know, I don't know Highland Park teachers, I know teachers in other districts, and they are really, really trying to figure this out. They don't want to lose students, you know, they really don't. And just to keep that in mind as you're working with teachers, that it's not about them not wanting to make students successful, help students be successful. They're struggling in this environment as well with the responsibilities of teaching content and certifying that students have learned something in a pandemic. So it's, it's just, it's complicated.
Yeah, I would imagine there's extreme, an extreme amount of stress on both sides and teachers struggling with what's the best way to hold students accountable while also being compassionate. And certainly, it's not like this board has gone forward and said, like, teachers, you know, we really don't want to see Fs ever. I mean, we may have implied that, but you know, teachers could be forgiven for not realizing that the board at least felt a certain way. Chris, go ahead.
So I, I, I wanted to sort of ask, ask Scott the same question that, that Rob asked. But maybe before I ask the question, you know, I, I mean, I'm, I'm sort of in the same situation for my course this semester. Where, you know, I, I just have a really significant percentage of people that have learned a very small percentage of the material. And, you know, I don't care about grades, but I'm not doing those people any favors by passing them along to the next course. They'll just fail even worse. And, and that will delay their degree time even more. If, if, you know, they go on to the next course, then they have to back up two courses to learn what they need. So my, my goal is to minimize the degree time for those people. And the best thing for those people is to fail them. Now, I, I don't know to what degree that's true in, in, in K-12. I'm not a K-12 educator. But are, are there courses where, you know, if, if, if we had a no-F policy, then everyone would just be automatically moved on to the next set of material?
I mean, from my, my personal perspective, an incomplete is a way to deal with that. Admittedly, a very time-consuming way to deal with that.
Well, I, I, I agreed with, with the incomplete proposal. But then I think Mark said that he was may, maybe even considering proposing not, not even having that, but just having a no-F policy. And my concern would be in fields where you do have a succession of material that you're really doing students a disservice when, when you do that.
Right. Especially in the sciences, I would imagine.
You know, there's some, some subjects where it's obviously not like that, right? Where you can be forgiving and not, you know, damage their time to degree. But in some fields, it's different.
Other students, that's pre-pandemic. And I think, I, would you rather I not speak? I can back off.
Oh, no, that's okay. Well, if you want to take, intervene and then we'll go to Rob Magaziner after you. Thanks.
Oh, keep a low profile while the board discusses. Oh, keep a low profile while the board discusses this matter. I have my own opinions, I have my own thoughts, but I think it's best that I just wait to. I'm taking copies notes, by the way. If you see me typing, I'm actually keeping a list for the leadership team and myself. So I'll let, let you go ahead. I think Monique can.
Oh, I thought Rob was there. Okay.
I did, but I think Rob was first, so.
Forgive me if I'm getting it wrong. Go ahead.
Very quick comment. I had been a very full conversation and I really appreciate you all. It's great. But so we just can't pretend that this is now is normal. I just feel like we, you know, we can be thinking in the big picture about the future and you know, what we should do in the, you know, forever. But this is not normal. We need, we need to address now and recognize that it's different than, than the usual. So that's the only thing that I would add.
I agree. Let's, let's work on the, the smaller scale issue for now.
Right.
Monique? Were you? There you are. Yeah.
I guess.
It's not your face, it's so difficult. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I guess I, I just wanted to say, and thinking about Chris's comment about the, you know, making sure that the students are actually learning the content. And that's, that's what is this, really are trying to accomplish beyond grading and failing. And I, I think that we can accomplish that without failing students, you know, without issuing Fs. And so I know for me as a teacher, and yes, it does take more work in a sense, when I'm giving even more of myself to students who need more time, who need to do corrections on midterms or finals or writing assignments, who need to do revisions. But boy, the gratification that they receive and I receive when they have sort of progressed in their understanding of the content or, you know, have taken their writing up a level or notch or two, really pays off in, you know, in the end. And so I think that if we think about though, and Scott, you mentioned this sort of in your presentation, thinking about those opportunities to ensure that we're filling in some of the gaps or deepening the learning process for students who may be struggling by giving those additional supports, that's the way that we ensure that they're not just move, passing, moving along to a higher level without really being ready, so to speak. Yeah, I just, again, I just want to say that there's, there are ways to do that. And it's not an either or sort of predicament that we have to be in that we can certainly still say we're not failing, we're not giving out any Fs, we are, that's off the table for us. But we're going to do everything that we can to ensure that our students are learning what they need to learn. And that may be different for different students, clearly. That I believe should be the focus. And I'm all, and I'm completely understanding of what that means for, for teachers, being that I am one. And I, and I know that we want to be as compassionate as we possibly can. And I will say that it is very difficult as a teacher, when you have the pressure of like, we're doing so much right now. We're, we're, we're doing so, we're making adjustments every single day. We're trying to navigate hybrid and learning in person and remote students. And it's can be frustrating when we feel like, okay, well, maybe this particular or that particular student isn't engaged, they are not with us. How do we reach them? How do, so what supports, I guess Scott would be my question, what supports have been provided all along the way? And, and maybe this is thinking backwards and you don't want to, you want to think about going forwards. But I think a part of what we have to be doing right now is looking back and seeing how did we get here? And I'm sure that every district that's having this issue across the country is thinking about this. How do we even get here to where we know we're in pandemic mode? But yeah, and we have, but we have these expectations of our students that we're trying to maintain. We're trying to maintain as normal as possible of a learning environment, which we can talk about how possible that really is. And as a result, we're here with these, these dramatic increases in students who are failing. So looking back, how do we, how do we get here? And what do we need to do differently? You know, I know you came up with some ideas, right, for what can happen to support the students who are failing essentially. But I guess beyond that, I'm thinking, in order to think forward, we got to look back and see, okay, what did we do? What, what did we do wrong? And how can we change that? As opposed to just trying to put a band-aid, get, get those kids, you know, a non-failing grade and then move on. Are we going to keep doing more of the same? Are we going to, are we just going to keep, you know, putting some extra resources into the students that we think are needed the most? When actually, that's even hard to gauge if we're just looking at grades. So I think I have a few questions where this is concerned in terms of process now.
Did you want to ask them now or save them for Scott for later?
Those are my questions, but. There would probably be more, the more we think about this. But again, it's going back to see, to see how we got to this point, I think is really critical before making too many decisions about how to, how to quote fix it, especially when we're talking about fixing kids.
Yeah, really good point. I do want to give a shout out. One of my kids' teachers is very good about that in math, about giving kids a chance to correct their tests and then going over the corrections with them. And, you know, kids do really learn that way. And I would hope that teachers who have been successful with that could sort of lead the way on this, in terms of like helping their colleagues figure out how to get into it with kids who are not understanding something, who aren't, who aren't engaged in class. That teacher I know does a ton of extra work. I mean, she must be miserable. But she does it. And it's just, it's a gift. It really is. And I would, I don't know, but I would imagine for this teacher's students, it doesn't get to that point because, you know, she's engaged with each one. Mariana, I think your hand was up?
Yeah, I just kind of wanted to like give a small input because well, Polly and I like, I mean, that's like our main like purpose as like members here because we're one of like the few people that can be more connected to like other students' opinions or feelings about how things are going. Besides parents, of course, because parents, I mean, they're, they're for their kids. But I think that based also on what I've heard from like other classmates, my friends, when I've talked to Polly about everything that's been going on and even my personal experience. And this is also something that I've talked about with my guidance counselor, which it helped a lot. But I just think that so far, like, I think it's a very like hard time for absolutely everybody. And there's just so many factors that influence everybody's situations and daily routines now that everything has changed so much. And I think we're at a, in a situation and in a, at a point that everybody has to make each other accountable. On each, like, everybody has to make each other accountable because just how their stuff, a lot of things going on at the staff's, like their own houses and teachers' houses, just how there's a lot of going on at their homes, because everybody has been affected in so many ways. There's also a lot of things going on in students' houses. So since there's so much going on in everybody's lives, that's why, that's my point of why we have to keep each other accountable on how we can help each other and how we have to like communicate with each other on how we can make for now, the, this system better, like the remote, remote learning, because I feel like that's also a very big focus right now, since right now, like experts are explaining that it's, it looks like it's gonna, the cases are increasing or they're going to keep increasing. So it looks like remote learning, it's gonna be there for a little while. So I think that's like a big focus that it has to like, there's just something in the system right now that makes everything feel very overwhelming really quickly.
Yes.
And it feels like, it feels like missing, you miss one assignment or one do they? And then it just keeps piling up really quickly. There's just something in the, yeah, like there's just something in the system. And I don't want to be like sound disrespectful towards the work that has been put in to what we have right now. I just think that maybe there's just something, a little something that needs to be fixed within the organization of, for example, the, the distribution of the assignments or that kind of organization, because I feel like in a school, we had a certain routine. And I mean, the teachers had a certain routine and it felt more that everybody was on the same page, like you were saying before. It felt more that everybody was on a certain routine, which is of course, it's hard right now. Like I said, so much going on. So many factors in, I think there's so many, too many factors influencing in people's daily routine, which means that as students have to know that our teachers are going through many things. And we don't expect to, things to be graded like every day and things like that. I really want to reach out to the teachers to understand that it's, it works the other way around as well. And that in many students, their parents, many parents lost jobs, including myself. My mom lost one of her jobs. So like, there's so many things, so many factors influencing people's lives like that, mental health. Many people go through a lot of stuff that they, not everybody feels comfortable sharing it with their teachers. The day that they don't want to share their camera on or stuff like that, not everybody feels comfortable reaching out right away or reaching out entirely or just sharing all of it. So I think it's just that we have to have each other accountable so that we understand each other better and what we're going through so that we can help each other like more in a bigger way. And, and yeah, it's mostly that organization way, because I feel like everything feels very overwhelming very quickly. And, and, and it's that because now we have to do more at home. It's not school and homework at home, it's more at home. And everything accumulates so much so quickly that it feels like, as a student, I feel like teachers forget that we don't only do schoolwork and we not only are on our computers for a long day during the day, but also we have clubs, we have activities, we have travel teams, we have our families, we have, there's also, I, I would like to say, there's many students that now are looking forward to getting jobs and working in jobs to help their families now.
Yes.
So there's just so many things that now, everything was so overwhelming. Like I said, I'm sorry if I'm repeating myself. This is that. But that's basically a few ideas that I wanted to share.
Thank you. Thank you. I think you're getting a lot of claps from the, from the board for that. I mean, two, two things that I really like about what you said, and certainly more than that that you said, but this idea that we think of ourselves as a system, we're compassionate towards one another, we're compassionate towards our teachers, our teachers are compassionate towards our students. And Monique, you mentioned that earlier today. I think that's really important. Students need to give their teachers some slack and vice versa. You know, this is not a time, this is a time for accountability in terms of being compassionate and finding out what the other side needs, the other side, the other partner needs, rather than accountability. You've got to grade my work by tomorrow and you got to do all these assignments immediately. You're going to, you know, get a C or D or an F. So thank you. The other thing, I, I agree, at least in my house, with a high school or middle schooler, things do seem to get, feel overwhelming very quickly. The assignments and this and that, and not sort of having the structure of your friends and moving from class to class. There's something very overwhelming about it. And then when you add in pandemic related stuff, job loss and illness and all the other things, taking care of siblings, it just becomes absolutely unbelievable. So thank you. Thank you very much for sharing that. That is so important for us to know. Darcy, and I think someone else had their hand up. I think I've ignored that other person. I've forgotten who you are. Darcy, go ahead. And other person, please raise your hand.
I will be super quick because we're getting so late. But first, I just want to say, Mariana, you like, you got me like a little overcooked over here, like you. Thank you for speaking up. Like, that was just amazing, absolutely amazing. And I'm sorry for whatever stressors are going on for you. And you're right. Like, that's how I started what I said too. Everybody has their own stressors in their own house. It's not, Michelle, I'm going to give a shout out to Michelle who, you know, said very early on in all of this, like, none of us can, should be competing in the suffering Olympics, right? Like, everybody is suffering and suffering in their own way, right? And we all need to be mindful of that, that everyone is going through their own stuff as we proceed through this. But the last thing I just wanted to say, Scott, is I think we so need to, and I think different people have said this in different ways, but I wanted to try to say it in a very concrete way. We very often in education look at outputs, you know, which in this case is the kids' grade, when what we really need to be focused on is inputs, right? Like, don't just look at which kids and which groups got the Fs, but look at what classes those kids are in, how those classes are structured, how those assignments are being handed out, how many assignments are being handed out, because that's certainly what I've seen with my kids. Is the more assignments there are, the more the assignments are handed out asynchronously, not with the teacher even on the screen saying, this is what we're going to work on today. If you don't finish it in class, you need to fit. Stuff is being assigned to them asynchronously and they're supposed to go look for it here and go look for it there. And you got an email and you got it. No, no, kids should not be searching for assignments. If you're not going to assign a kid to, an assignment to a class or a kid face to face in a Zoom or in whatever, no, you know, that is where I feel like it becomes just absolutely overwhelming for them when they have to start chasing down their work. So we really need to look at those inputs. How are we delivering that instruction to them? And how are we supporting them? If we get to them sooner, if we don't assign them stuff, not face to face, and if we don't let a kid get behind more than one or two assignments, we shouldn't see this. And like, yes, you're always going to have some kids who are going to fail a class because they're not engaged or because of just what, just they don't like the material, they don't like the teacher, they don't like whatever. But a lot of what we're seeing, I think, is just kids not even know, knowing how to engage.
Yep, agreed. So Scott, I'm going to go to you in a second, Chris. Maybe Scott, this can be something for your superintendent's report next week to sort of report back to us on how leadership is thinking about this and and that sort of thing.
There's something by next week. I mean, obviously, this is a, I think Mark mentioned it earlier, all hands on deck situation.
Yeah.
If not next week, I'll send an email to the board very soon after next week. I'll try my best, however, to make a formal presentation in public.
Great. Yeah, thanks. I mean, I don't care how formal, really. Chris and then Michelle, maybe then we'll wrap it up and move on to our committee items. Chris, go ahead.
Yeah, super fast question. I mean, one advantage we have at Rutgers is that, you know, because of the January break, we can accept late work, you know, before the start of the next semester. Scott, is there any chance of creating some space in the schedule? I mean, if we're going to do the I's, the I proposal, it would sure help to have a little bit of extra time.
You mean the, the incomplete, the incomplete proposal, you mean?
Yeah, I mean, it would sure help, you know, just to give one example, to push back the semester for a week, you know, just to give kids a chance to finish up some of the work. I don't know how, how, how written in stone the schedule is.
I think that would be useful. I'll let Scott respond on the details. I mean, my own personal inclination, and this, of course, will be the administration's decision, would be to make the deadline for finishing up work or for demonstrating knowledge in some way, demonstrating mastery to maybe be at some point after kids are back in school in the building, so that, you know, to the extent some kids are, are are missing a relationship with a, with a helpful adult, maybe we could try to restore some of that before we, you know, demand a showing of mastery or completion of assignments.
But it would, it would sure help to have one week where the teachers just worked with the students that failed.
Yes, yes.
Give everybody else a week or two off.
Yes. I just want to add to that. When we did parent teacher conferences back whenever, a couple of months ago, one of the teachers that I met with actually said that this was, and I, maybe I should have brought it up at the time, I just was a little flummoxed, that the district had decided that we were no longer in a crisis and that grading was going on as normal. So the same rules that applied pre-pandemic were applying now. So there was no leeway. There was no leeway with assignments. There was no extra time. So.
So we should think about what kind of culture is pervasive.
Right.
And what leadership might need to do to, you know, to change that. Michelle, real quick? Not real quick, somewhat quick.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to say very quickly that this coming week, you know, before our next meeting, I would like for us to think about some proposals, some real tangible proposals that we could ask of, of leadership, because I do feel like a bit concerned about the timeline that was put forward. You know, waiting until February or the following calendar year is unacceptable, in my view. So I would like us to come up with some real tangibles. And maybe they're radical, maybe they're extreme, but something needs to be done immediately. The way that it sounds to me, it sounds serious and we need to do something immediately. Secondly, I would like to say that, you know, it's great that we want to it's great that we want to look at other districts and how they're doing things. But as usual, other districts that we're looking at don't have a lot in common with Highland Park. Um, you know, in many different ways, they're much bigger than we are, they're much more, um, or less diverse, um, economically, racially, et cetera. Um, so I, I don't know that other districts will have answers that are really useful to us. I, I enjoy looking at other districts, but I do think that this is a national crisis. We have a better chance of looking, um, everywhere rather than specific other districts. Um, you know, I, I really think we need to be as creative as possible. So that's my, my ask of my fellow board members is to look beyond and to come up with some tangibles for next week.
That's good. Let's, I mean, Scott's gonna report back to us. Um, maybe so we don't give Scott a deluge. Maybe if you have thoughts on this topic in particular, email me or Mark. I mean, you can obviously all email Scott at your leisure whenever you want, but it might make things a little bit more streamlined. Uh, email me or Mark, uh, and maybe we can put together a document that sort of summarizes some written board views. Um, students as well, if you have ideas, um, and then Scott can use them as he sees, sees fit.
I would ask that you email both of us so we don't have to pass the mails back and forth.
Yeah, that'd be great.
And I have the beginnings of something and, and I'm just so happy that this worked out this way. Um, and I'm, I have some thoughts about how to change my initial thoughts to make them better, but I, I've heard so many other good thoughts, so thank you.
And I think in addition to the emergency of dealing with the Fs that are on the record now, there's the, the broader issue of showing compassion and how we can make this a compassionate community, um, as Mariana said and Monique has said before and Darcy. Um, so let's keep our eyes on both of those prizes. Scott, did you want to say anything at this late date? Oh, you're muted or I'm not hearing you.
Did you hear me?
Now I can.
Yeah, yeah.
Nope.
Three, testing, one, two, three.
Yep, you're back.
Back.
Now you're not.
Testing, one, two, three.
Oh, beautiful.
Got me?
Yep.
Okay, I don't have my sound on, so don't say anything. I'm gonna work on the sounds in a second. Um, just two things, I, I want to follow up, uh, about Michelle's points. First of all, uh, I want Michelle to recognize that I see this as pressing as you do. And I'm not suggesting that we wait to do things till February. These action steps that we're discussing, some of which I think are very viable, can be done within days, if not, uh, weeks. And as I pointed out, we're already getting to some of these actions. Changing mindsets, it's gonna take some time, but we're gonna start right now. The second thing I want to point out is the individuals with whom I spoke in West Windsor, South Brunswick, um, uh, Point Pleasant Beach and, um, uh, oh gosh, I forgot the other district that I spoke with. But these are individuals who I know focus on the whole child. You talk about Dave Adheral, Scott Fetter, um, uh, William Smith. Uh, and while I'm sure there's some great models outside New Jersey, I'm fortunate to have relationships with people who I trust, think the same, somewhat, somewhat the same way we do about children. And so that's why I reached out to those folks and I'm gonna continue to pick their brains. I mean, Will, Will Smith is somebody with whom I've been speaking about, um, our honors and AP selection criteria. And as some members of the Equity and Excellence Committee know, I'm looking to revamp that process. Am I ready to talk about that now, obviously? But I'm able to take, get some, uh, input from my peers who are already gone down that road. That, that's what I'm gonna be looking for in this case as well. So with that, I'm gonna turn on my speakers and then shut up.
Sorry, Scott, we've, uh, been talking a lot tonight. Okay. Uh, Michelle, uh, it's time for our committee reports. Would you like to give the, uh, curriculum committee report?
Hey, Anne, Anne, can I make a suggestion that since we've gone till nine, might, this might be a good time to let public go first before we go?
Oh, sure.
We've been waiting all this time.
Absolutely, that sounds great. I'd like to move that we open a public comment session at this time. Um, I would suggest that we, uh, try to keep it relatively short, uh, recognizing that we will have two other public comment sessions. Um, I'm gonna propose that we try to keep it to half an hour, uh, with approximately three minutes per speaker, approximately. Um, and asking that if people have longer comments to make or, uh, you know, didn't get their chance in 30 minutes, they just come back after our committee reports or again at the end of the meeting. Um, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second.
Can we do a roll call by acclamation, uh, Linda? Can we just all say aye? Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Everybody against, proudly raise your hand. That's a tough one. Um, okay, uh, let me move to the public comment speech that I need to give. The Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and has reserved this time for your comments. Board policies 164 and 167 establish and regulate the right of the public to participate in public meetings. If you would like to speak, members of the public, please raise your blue hand or otherwise so indicate. I'll call on you, uh, and then speak for three minutes. And please don't forget, as always, to give your name and your address. Or if you're a student, to tell us what school you are a part of. All right, I'll give everybody a minute to raise their hand. Okay, Ms. Casal Dunn. Go ahead when you're ready.
Allison Casal Dunn, 202 Lawrence Avenue. Um, I just want to say I'm really happy that you're having this conversation tonight. I think the discussion of assessment, especially as it pertains to a pandemic, is especially important. I also would like to remind you that this concern was brought up to you on October 5th extensively by a lot of parents. And if you go back and you watch your meeting, you will see in your public comment that parents asked you to talk about, as a board, assessment and grading and how it was going to be adjusted to account for the pandemic. And we were told that it was not your responsibility to recommend assessment policy to leadership or to teachers. So I ask you as a parent who, right now, tonight, I am fuming because I feel like you did not listen to us two months ago. You waited for the kids to fail in order to act. How are you going to take that and move forward to anticipate things that parents are anticipating so that you can be ahead of the game? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. All I can say is that we will continue trying. That's not satisfying, I realize. Um, all right, and the, the truth is, I, I wanted to clarify something about what, what it is the board's role to do. We actually can't order Scott, take those Fs off those transcripts and change them all and do this and do that. We can strongly suggest, uh, if necessary, we can enact policies, which takes, you know, over a month to, to get done. Um, uh, you know, we can have a political fight with Scott and refuse to fund, you know, his, his projects, but it's not really within the purview of the board to demand that Scott adopt a particular grading policy. So it's possible that someone was trying to express that point. Um, and it came off sounding more like it's, it's none of our business as the board. Um, certainly we are, we've made it our business tonight and, yeah, we should do a better job of anticipating what parents will be concerned about. That is correct. Uh, other members of the public, please raise your hand. I'll give you a minute. Okay, uh, we'll have another public comment session after our committee reports and again at the end. Uh, Michelle, curriculum report, please.
Okay, so once again, I'm going to stop the video. I only have one item, um, to, um, pass tonight, and that is, uh, um, a school trip. Um, a remote school trip for our chemistry, high school chemistry, um, I believe. Ms. Keisha Stephen is, um, going to be taking her class on a virtual school trip. So, um, you know, I'm excited to see or hear more about that once it happens. Um, the other thing on the agenda is the committee report. And, um, we did discuss the issue of, um, grading in a much broader sense. Um, but it was a very full conversation and I'm pretty convinced that we covered every single part during our public com, uh, you know, conversation just now. So that is everything from curriculum.
That was brief. Scott, did you want to add something?
I, yeah, I just want to echo something that, uh, Michelle touched on. Um, what I haven't talked about with the board is that the leadership team has spent four workshops so far. We have another one coming up Friday, uh, talking about authentic assessment. We're, we're gonna be driving our district away from traditional means of assessment, more towards authentic assessment. And I recognize that doesn't directly correlate to grading policies, grading policy and protocol, but, uh, but I don't, I, I, I think, uh, what, what Michelle was alluding to was, um, uh, a preparation the leadership team is making to move away from tests and, and other assessments that don't, that accurately allow kids to demonstrate their real world knowledge and demonstrate what they know in the best way they possibly can. Not just to the more narrow sense that we do have them demonstrate their knowledge now. So we, we, we anticipate by March, we're gonna be rolling it out to the staff. We want to make sure we do it carefully. But that, that again is aside from this discussion that we had earlier. It's par, it runs parallel though to the work that we'll be doing with the students who failed.
I, I think I did get them slightly confused, at least the, um, the educational jargon, so to speak, because it is, um, to my mind, it is, is very much the same conversation. More than parallel, I would say they are, you know, kind of twisted together because the way that we assess students is through grading, um, and testing. So yes, we are talking seriously, um, with Scott and curriculum about authentic assessment. And, and, and that's kind of exactly what we talked about tonight. Um, you know, focusing on strengths rather than weaknesses and et cetera. So my apologies for getting the words mixed up a bit.
Honestly, since we're dealing with giving people Fs during a pandemic, it seems to me that we have, it's quite an ask to get to changing our whole philosophy of assessments. I know we're working on it, but, but you can imagine from the perspective of the public, it must seem like that's a really big lift. Um, so we'll get through this and then see where we are.
If not now, when?
If not now, when? Right, exactly. Hope, hope floats. No, wait, that's a TV show, isn't it? Okay, uh, anybody have comments or questions about curriculum? Okay, let's move on to finance with Mark, please.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, so we have no committee report. We'll be meeting next Monday at six forty-five. Uh, there's the usual bill lists, that's number two. Uh, number three is traveling related expense reimbursement reports, and that's for some virtual, uh, learning that people will be doing. Number four are, um, uh, three, uh, three different, uh, contracts for professional services. Um, I just would like to point out, number three is yogurt classes, that's for teachers, uh, for staff. Um, and it's being run by Kinetics, which is a local Highland Park firm. So hopefully eases the stress and, um, makes, um, people's days, uh, better. Number five is a submission of a sustainable jersey for schools, small grant application to support the Little Sisters in the Know program. Um, item six is, um, a grant from, uh, a FAST, which is a division of Pride, which is NJEA organization for the amount of, uh, forty-five hundred dollars, which will be used to purchase literacy kits from Pioneer Valley. And that will benefit kindergarten and first grade students at Irving School. So thank you NJEA and HPEA. Um, items seven and eight are slightly related. Um, so we've received more extraordinary special aid, uh, special education aid this summer uh, for the amount of approximately fifty-eight thousand dollars. So they increased it, which is pretty amazing. Um, well, and mostly because our special education, uh, expenses went up so much last year. And then, um, we're moving the money around so that there's an appropriation uh, of reserved fund balance in the amount of the exact same amount uh, to the account of tuition for private schools for the handicap so that we can pay what's likely to be higher amounts this year. So it goes in one pocket and out the other pocket. But, uh, thank goodness, we've gotten a little bit more money from the state. And that's the report.
Just one clarification?
Yes.
And I, I'll try to hold back. Um, I want to point out to the board and those who are here from the community that I'll be adding another agenda item under number four, professional services. We're gonna have Kinetics also offer yoga for students.
Oh, great.
In, in the same manner, yeah, some in person.
Fabulous.
That's great, thanks. Any questions or concerns for finance? Nope, have I missed anybody? No. Okay, personnel. Uh, Personnel Committee report was mostly confidential items. Let me see if I can find it again here on my eighteen screens. Um, yeah, it was almost all, uh, uh, confidential matters. We are, I believe, uh, you know, we're, as always, there are a couple of positions that are gonna need to be filled on a temporary basis. So Scott is hard at work, uh, looking to fill those positions. And I think we have somebody for the one open maternity leave position, um, not ready to be announced, but, but targeted. Um, okay, uh, agenda is mostly self-expl, oh, I know, I wanted to say, um, Scott has, has told the board a little bit about, uh, getting started with a winter conditioning program and a winter activities program for middle school, high school students who, uh, were disappointed not to be returning to school um, and who may be, uh, missing out on some socialization. So Scott, I think you'll be talking to us next week, is that right, about personnel?
Yes, so there'll be a, uh, agenda item recommending the approval of coaches to conduct those activities. The Personnel Committee is gonna get an email from me tomorrow morning.
Wonderful.
About that.
Thanks, I'm really looking forward to that, to the email, but also to the program. Um, let's see, the agenda is pretty self-explanatory. We have an interim, number six, we have an interim supervisor of educational services who will be, uh, temporarily stepping in. Um, let's see, two, two, two. And that is just about it from the non-self-explanatory items. Uh, any questions or concerns? All right, let's go to policy. Mark. Oh, sorry, Ma, Darcy, Darcy, it'll take me like a year. Well, this is my second to last meeting, so, you know.
Oh, great, thank you, Anne. So policy did meet, uh, we met on December first. And, uh, of course, today I wrote up a, a little, uh, synopsis of what we talked about at that meeting and sent it around to everybody. Um, basic just, just is that after the last time policy met, um, I went through the list that, um, we've been working off of for, um, quite a while now and did what we, um, the board did way, way back in the day and divided those policies up into, um, the respective committees. So, um, some for policy, some for personnel, some for finance and some kind of overlap for both curriculum and equity and excellence. Um, since, uh, Mark and Anne are both on that committee, um, we've kind of jumped on those and I think Mark's already looked at all the finance ones and Anne's looked at all the personnel ones. And, um, they're working on getting those to the rest of their committees to take a look at. And, um, I emailed Michelle and Monique today, an apology that I have not done better to get together with them. But, um, hopefully we'll do that sometime soon, ladies, sometime soon, ladies. Um, so we can divvy up those, um, policy and equity and excellence, uh, those, the curriculum and equity and excellence policies, um, for those committees to take a look at. And then once the committees take a look at those policies, then they can come back into policy. We'll just kind of give them a perfunctory once over and then they'll go on to an agenda. So the hope is we'll kind of get through this last batch of old policies, you know, relatively quickly in the next couple of months. And then, um, we can move on next year to just policy alerts as they come in from Strauss Esme. Um, and then also, okay, Rob, don't distract me with a cute dog. Come on, what are you doing to me?
Buddy!
Um, like I'm not having a hard enough time. You gotta put a cute dog into the.
Oh.
Um, uh, so that we can get through, uh, policy alerts as they come in from Strauss Esme. And then also there's a list that I linked on that, um, on that report that I sent out to everybody today. Um, there's a nice juicy list of policies that are supposed to be, um, looked at once a year. So, um, my hope is that next year I can kind of divide those up into chunks and we'll get through those next year and we'll get through any policy alert. So, so, um, policy also looked at, I think it was four, um, four policies that were outstanding for our committee. Um, so, uh, three of those you see on the agenda tonight for first read. One, we held back because there's, uh, we needed a little bit more administrative review on there, um, on that policy. And there was one thing in particular that that policy needed to do, which was to designate. Um, so this was the surrogate parents and foster parents policy two, four, six, seven, which is in the drive. Um, that policy, um, asks the, the district to appoint a surrogate, uh, parent coordinator. Um, so. So you'll see that on tonight's agenda under personnel. So I'm assuming that now that we've kind of taken care of that stuff, we'll put that, that, that policy will come back onto the agenda for next month for first reading. So you've got four for first reading. I think, what do we have? Two left from last, last month for second reading. And that should be a per policy.
All right, questions, concerns? Thoughts? Marilyn, yes, go ahead. Oh, you're muted, as I usually am. Yeah, go for it.
Sorry. On the special ed policy, just like special education policy, there's one spot on there where there's an option, like you will accept electronic or you will not accept electronic requests from parents. So I just
Was the option was, I'm sorry, actually, I didn't look at the one that was on the drive. I should have. Was that option not checked off? Because it was on the one that we were working from.
Yeah, neither one was checked off on this one. That's why I was just curious.
Okay, yeah. So Scott, can you make sure that Susan puts the correct one into the drive? Because there was, we check off the option that we would allow electronic signatures. And we actually talked about that a little bit, you know, particularly during the pandemic. It was really important that we really accept those kind of pretty much across the board because it may just be impossible to get parents' physical signatures.
And we did, we, we did verify with our board attorney who specializes in special ed, that it's entirely appropriate to allow digital signatures.
Yeah.
Good, good, good.
Make sure that Susan.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry about that, Marilyn. That was just the wrong one got onto the drive. So make sure that's updated. So you can take a look at that before we vote on it next, next week.
Okay, other question, which is not actually related to the, it's the people assessment one. But Scott, do you know whether, whether the state is actually going to run their regular assessments this year?
So far, they're saying they're going to. And so far, what's come out?
I mean, right?
I mean, to me, the most even more ridiculous thing is what's come out of, you know, Betsy DeVos's mouth is that she's not going to run NAEP, but she is going to make states do state testing, which is to me, the opposite of what makes sense. If you're going to do anything, you do NAEP because that is just a random sample of students.
Right.
And that's
And it's less than basic. It takes about a day instead of the three days fair.
I mean, it's, it's, it's all utterly insane. But I mean, right, I mean, this is so much of the problem that we're all encountering at the local level. And we've been saying that since the beginning of the pandemic is that either the lack of or the ridiculous things coming down from both the federal and the state level puts these unbelievable pressures on, you know, administrators and boards at the local level to make just decisions that we should not have to be making. So, so yeah, I mean, from, for everything that I know right now, there doesn't seem to be a plan to halt testing. But yeah, it's kind of unbelievable.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Yep, definitely to look forward to.
Just as an aside, I wanted to tell everyone that my students who are now studying carpentry and welding at the Middlesex County Tech, they were given the NJSLA today. And so I had to opt them out there, but things are going according to the state schedule as far as standardized testing goes. So I brought my crazy over to the Vo-Tech and I'm opting out over there. So I'll, I'll keep you all posted.
Excellent. Thank you, Michelle. Anybody else on policy?
I just wanted to, it's me, Monique.
Hi.
I have my raised hand option here. I just wanted to clarify that we're looking at three policies for first reading, correct?
Uh, yep.
Okay, all right, okay. Three, and then, and yeah, and just thanks, Darcy. We will certainly work together on looking at these policies and then moving them on through. So thank you.
Yes.
Okay, Monique, equity and excellence.
Okay, so our, our equity and excellence committee meeting of just two days ago, I believe, actually, I had to leave early. So the first part of the meeting where I attended was actually covered during the first part of this meeting and it, because it was all about part of Scott's presentation going over the grading data. So I don't have anything to add to that. But Michelle did offer to follow up with any content that I missed when I left the meeting early. So Michelle, I'm going to ask you just to, to chime in and summarize.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. You did not miss very much because we did pack it up pretty soon after you left. But Marilyn, myself and Dr. Taylor did discuss a little bit further about grading. And I don't think that there was any kind of, you know, significant goal presented or anything, but I do remember that we did ask Scott to come back with some more data for us about why those students were having a hard time. So I think some of that was discussed in his presentation. And I, I really do think that that was all that you missed. And Marilyn, I guess if you remember anything else. But yeah, I, I, I do know that we had, we had an ask of Scott. So we are looking forward to that information once it's ready.
Thank you. Marilyn, was there?
No, nothing to add. You got it.
I will just say really quick that one thing I, I do know that we also talked about was just this. I guess the question of, you know, how do we address these concerns, whether it's going to be, you know, through a policy? You know, is it a board level policy that's going to be required or, or needed at this point? Are we really just looking at grading decisions being made where they're supposed to be made? And that is, you know, at the administrative level. So I think, Scott, that was something you were also talking about in terms of possibly, again, first going back to the leadership team, but then also thinking about putting together some sort of a, sort of a group to sort of explore instead of, we kind of talked about that not quite being the way that we thought it was best to go at this point, just to add another layer of, yeah, another layer of unnecessary, I think.
And Monique, I agree. I, my, my thinking has evolved since our meeting and I do agree that this is just something that I should focus on myself with my team and not have to get bought down and committee with. I mean, I'll, I'll be working with various groups, like as I mentioned earlier, the teacher specialists.
Right.
The ELL teacher, special ed teachers. But I, I don't think that necessarily means to have, have to do it in committee.
Got it. Okay, great.
Sounds good.
And, and I do want to assure the board before the night's out that this is a high priority for me. I've gotten some wonderful input from all of you, genuinely, genuinely wonderfully input. And I'll, I'll, I will be in communication with the entire board on a consistent basis at this point about your concerns as well. I just want to assure you that that's going to happen. No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Comments or questions for Monique or Michelle or Marilyn? Nope. Okay, let's go on to our second public comment period. The Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and has reserved this time for your comments. Board policies 164 and 167 establish and regulate the right of the public to participate in public meetings. If you'd like to speak, please raise your blue hand or otherwise make yourself known and tell us your name and address. I'll wait for a minute while folks get organized. Okay, seeing no public comment, it is time for the president's report. I had asked for the committee assignments to be put on here, but I'd forgotten that Mark probably did that last time. Mark, did you go over the new committee assignments? Marilyn would be assigned to personnel, et cetera. Darcy would be taking over our policy. Oh, you're, you're muted. I forgot that I had missed the last meeting.
Yeah, you did. Yeah.
You did. Okay.
I did put that reminder in.
I've been reminded several times and I repeatedly forgot. So thank you, Mark, for handling that. I don't think we have anything further. Of course, in January, I will be doing reorganization. And if people are interested in switching committees, they should be thinking about that at this time so they can make their requests or get ready to discuss it at our meeting.
It would be helpful if you sent Anne and I both your thoughts about that. If anyone wants to change, move, add, I think we'd like to know it.
Yeah, I mean, I know last time we had a request recently to change and I, I didn't sort of want to manhandle anybody into changing committees. But now that we're starting a new year, someone, the next president or myself might sort of ask people if they would as a favor, consider stepping aside and letting somebody else switch committees. So let us know your thoughts. Wonderful. Okay, any questions on that president's report? No, old business. Anyone? New business. Public comment. The Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and has reserved this time for your comments. Board policies 164 and 167 establish and regulate the right of the public to participate in public meetings. Please raise your hand if you would like to speak. All right, give it another second. All right, seeing no public comment, I'd like to move that we adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Good night, everyone. Thanks, everybody.
Bye.